All right. Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, April 6th. And I would like to call this meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Education, to order, and ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll? Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh? Ms. Lilge? Mr. Lopez? Ms. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Richardson?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams? Ms. Willis?
Present.
Forum is present. Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez did let me know that he was going to be absent this evening. And I believe this is one of our last few meetings where we will be missing Dr. Kavanaugh from her research adventure. So excited to have her back soon this month. So that brings us to additions to the agenda for which we have none. Public comment on agenda items. I do have one public comment, but it is on a non-agenda item. So we will save that till later in the meeting. And then that brings us to our health and wellness update. So I'm going to invite up our good friend, Dr. Sue Wheeler. And I told her I was gonna do this early as part of her introduction. So, you know, the wonderful social media platform, Facebook, allows you to see reminders of your life years past. And so with it being March and April, all my reminders of were from the beginning of the pandemic. And I looked through just the fast and furious transition and way we got into this. And all I kept thinking was, I'm so thankful for our team and how organized and data-driven and responsive we've been throughout this process to put ourselves in the position that we're in today. So excited to hear your report this evening. I'll turn it over to you.
I have a little... Hit it! Oh, and there it is. Yes. Yes. I just, I wanted to sit for a moment with lice words. So we just, we paused there. It is nice to be here this evening and be in a much better place than we were a year or so ago. The COVID updates to skip through here. The COVID metrics, once again, present a bit of a mixed bag. In Michigan, the weekly case rate dips 19%. And last week reflected the lowest weekly case count since July of '21. Ingham County remained in the low community risk level. On the flip side, the district reported our highest case numbers since October due to a two-week spike that we had in mid-March. Fortunately, we've seen a significant decline since spring break with few cases since March 25th. On the graphic here demonstrating the case counts by month, you'll see March did have a bit of a rise. But the last week or so of March, we dropped off significantly. We had 83 student cases with Avril, Eastern, Everett, and Patengill reporting the most cases. Staff cases more than doubled in March with 51 cases reported, including associated cases at both Cumberland and the Administration Building. The COVID coordination team is continuing to monitor and reported cases and continues to provide contact tracing and in-school testing, which has certainly led to decreased transmission at school. We provided take-home tests for all staff and any interested students prior to spring break. This week, we've had only five cases reported so far. The COVID team also has begun to participate in the multiplex testing program, which was offered through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. The multiplex are rapid tests, but they test for Flu A, Flu B, and COVID. This required special training and special equipment, which the COVID team completed. We're starting this testing at Beekman, Dwight Rich, Gardner, and each high school. Intentional supports for mental health, behavioral health, and tangible environmental supports continue throughout the district. I'm... I'm pushing the green button. There's only one button, so I should... Oh, now I'll be at the end. Well, I'm gonna, I'll just keep going and the picture will catch up to me. In addition to COVID coordination, we're also engaged in many health initiatives across the district. This year, we're expanding our partnership with Vision to Learn. Vision to Learn is a nonprofit organization that provides onsite vision screening, vision exams, and then glasses for students who need them, all at no cost to our families. We joined Vision to Learn last year as a pilot program, which proved to be very successful. And there it is. As you may know, the Ingham County Health Department provides the state-mandated vision screening for children in grades K-1, 3, 5, and 7. The Vision to Learn group, they come in and provide service to children in GSRP, ECSE, and then grades 2, 4, 6, and 8. We did this with intention so we could get every grade screened in the district, K, pre-K through 8. And then Vision to Learn also will accept students who fail the Ingham County screening. They will bring them in and do an exam and then provide the glasses for those students who need them. This collaboration has reduced barriers for vision care for many families and supports students' ability to fully access the curriculum. The program was recognized in the spring by Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist, who said this is an important resource for providing students with access to glasses to support their academic success. This shows you the schools. This table is the 11 schools who this year will participate with the Vision to Learn program. And as our partnership develops, we plan to reach each school each year. With the help of the nursing staff and each school staff, Vision to Learn will complete nearly 700 eye exams this year. They have already distributed 113 pairs of glasses with many more to come. Another exciting initiative that I spoke of last time I was with you is the BIPOC Care Closet. The program kicked off officially on March 17th with 450 requests for products in the first 24 hours. We are now up to 600 requests for personal care products, and it represents all 25 schools and the Capital Area K-12 program as well. Students and families simply may use this QR code that's been widely distributed in schools and through an all-district email. And it brings up this order form. They can see the products that we have available, and they may select three products at a time, which we then deliver either to their school or if they choose, they may pick them up on Monday afternoons at the Halleck Center. We are really pleased with the great response to the Care Closet. I thank you for the opportunity to share health and wellness updates as we move, hopefully, into a bit drier spring.
Great. I'd like to open the floor for questions. Are there any? Sure, Mr. Richardson?
For, for the Vision to Learn, it looked like you had a slide in there on like how many exams and then the fulfillment of those glasses.
Yes.
What is our follow-up when we know a kid needs glasses and they don't have glasses?
The Vision to Learn program, what's really special about them is they do the exam. If the child needs glasses, right at that time, they show them a selection of frames and colors. And then, you know, they take the order in about two weeks' time. They bring them to the school. For the children that are identified through the Ingham County program, the nursing staff makes personal contact with each family on the list of students who have failed the screen. At Ingham County, this is a screening. So what we ask families to do is then go further and get an exam. Vision to Learn will do the screening. If they fail the screen, they move into an exam. If they fail that, they provide the glasses.
Thank you. But I'm, that's awesome detail. What if we know they need glasses and then, is there a way to know like, hey, these 10 kids? I'm thinking about the new software, like, is there a way to identify in there that these? I think there's gonna be a correlation between kids that we know don't have, that need glasses?
Yeah.
Get them and lose them or for whatever reason don't have them. And I think that's something that we should keep an eye on because that's gonna affect their schooling perpetually.
And we do, in synergy, we do have the ability to track that. What students have failed a vision screen or a vision exam? And then what was the outcome of that? Did they receive glasses or not? Yeah. And then the ones that have not hit follow-up, our nursing staff follows up, makes contact with the family, and helps identify what was the barrier to getting glasses. Often, it's an insurance issue, and we have lots of ways we help families with that.
First of all, I love the vision. And I'm thinking about our students that are not in control. I would certainly admit something, especially if they're transferring.
Yes. If students are 9 through 12, they are not included in the state-mandated vision screening program. However, if the student self-identifies, you know, I feel like I'm not seeing well. I have to sit close to the board. Then, again, they can connect with the nurse assigned to their building, and we will help them do the exam and the follow-up required. We often get referrals from teachers who, they notice that the child's having trouble.
Do you have questions? Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your...
Thank you.
I already see you were getting ready. Mr. Superintendent, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to see all of you. It feels like it's been a long time. Spring break is a wonderful thing. I wish all jobs had it. It was, I hope everybody got some chance to relax, recuperate, and just do some thinking about, you know, how we can end the year strong. So I'll start off with, with the usual for transportation because I have a good transportation story to talk about. For gas cards, we're at 2,866. For CADA, it's 725. And then with Dean, it's 3,214 with 160 on the waitlist. That is a higher number that I quoted a while ago. We've gotten just more people that want to be put on the waitlist so that when and if we continue to lower it, we're able to serve them. I will say certainly they had a long meeting with Dean today, planning for next year, which we hope will really be able to do some good things that we'll talk about probably in the future. So thank you for that. But what I do want to point out, since I was talking about transportation yesterday, some of you might know, we lost power at Sexton. There was a pretty bad storm. It was pretty bad. There was a lot of rain and wind and what have you. And so the power gets knocked out. It's what happens with old buildings. And so we kind of had to make a decision, did it make sense to dismiss early or not? But one of the important questions, of course, is, you know, safety and security of children, always number one. And then the second is, well, how are they gonna get home? And so, of course, what you realize with CADA is that, you know, they have their bus passes, so they could in fact, you know, just wait for the next bus. But with our really incredible relationship with CADA, I called up the Deputy CEO, I think Andrew, that's your title, I don't know. I called up Andrew and I said, "So, we lost power and I need some buses." And his response was, "How many do you need?" And so he was able to send four CADA buses. Within, I think it was 15 minutes, we were able to get kids on the, on the bus and, and home. And that really just, I think, shows you how incredible these kinds of partnerships are. Where, I mean, that, that's how government's supposed to work, right? Is that the school district calls the, the public bus companies, say, "Hey, we really need some help," and, and they do it. And what was so nice was to see that not only did CADA send the buses, but they sent some central office support. And then Sexton was just fantastic. They had their people out there. We had a bunch of folks from central office. And it really just showed you what happens when everybody works together. So I want to really publicly thank CADA. I want to publicly thank Sexton and their team. I mean, Dan, you and your staff really did a terrific job getting, getting kids out, getting kids safely home, and I really, really appreciate that. So kind of over spring break, right? Certainly, we, we want to think about a lot of things. And, you know, today, in certainly my family's tradition, is the second night of Passover. But it's also, of course, tomorrow is Good Friday, Sunday is Easter. It's the month of Ramadan, you know, kind of the, the big three religions of the world are all celebrating some really, really important holidays. And I want to, you know, wish everybody a wonderful Easter, a wonderful Passover, a wonderful Ramadan. And just to kind of think about, you know, what, what a lot of those holidays are about. You know, there's kind of an old joke in the Jewish tradition that every Jewish holiday can be summed up the following way. "They tried to kill us. They didn't. Let's eat." And, you know, it's probably no, no better one to talk about that than Passover. You know, for those of you who don't know, the Passover is the story of Jews coming out of slavery. And it is the Exodus, it is the, the coming into Canaan. It is the idea of, you know, being enslaved and being able to, to, to be freed. And it's incredibly powerful story. And it's one that, you know, certainly all three major religions know because the Old Testament is certainly part of that thought process. But what's so interesting about Passover and why I bring it up today is that what the tradition is about is getting the family at the table to tell the story. You tell the story every year. The whole purpose of Passover is to remember that we were once slaves and we are not. That's pretty big, and that's pretty important. And the idea that we tell that story over and over and over again shows the power of education. It shows the power of storytelling. It tells, it's the power of narrative. It's the power of voice. And it just reminds me how important everybody's past is and everybody's traditions are and everybody's, you know, you know, story. And so, you know, when we're in, in school, when we're certainly trying to teach our kids, I think what's so, so great about that Passover story is, is that we all, we all participate. We all eat together. We all tell the story together. And in fact, the tradition is to pass what's called the Hagada, the, the book around. Everybody reads it together, and you're incorporating everybody. And even more interesting, and this came to me last night, which I was, I was like, "I can't believe I didn't think about this earlier." There's a part in the tradition where they have four questions. And it's the different children, you know, it's, you know, the wicked child. It's, it's the, the child that can't even speak. It's things like that. But what, what it really is, is differentiation. It's differentiated learning. It's saying, "Here's this story. Let me tell it to you four different ways." And what's really important about that as an educator is everybody has a seat at the table. Everybody gets fed. But not every kid is gonna have to read the same or have the exact same answer. They're gonna maybe read the same book, but maybe one, you know, kid gets to do this assignment or one kid gets to do that assignment. Or you're at their reading level so that they can understand it, but they're still doing the work. The idea of differentiating education is so important. And I think that that's, that's what we need to do, certainly as a school district, but also as a community, is that everybody gets a seat at the table. Everybody gets to eat. Everybody gets their voice to be heard. And everybody gets to learn the story, but they gotta learn it their way. And they've gotta have the right questions for them. And then we have to engage them in a way that really makes the most sense for them, which is a long interlude to Lansing Tech. So if, if the Passover story is, you know, one of, of coming out of slavery and everybody's telling the story, but it's being respectful that we tell it in different ways and we're differentiating, then what better way for a school district to represent that than by giving children an opportunity to learn in a multiplicity of ways? And so for those of you that were there, thank you so much for being at the press conference. For those of you who watched it on TV, I hope that was everybody. They saw really something very special. Is that yesterday, we announced that starting, well, it's really the last week in August, but let's just call it September, is that we're gonna be opening up a, a new high school called Lansing Tech. And that's really powerful. The idea that we're gonna have a four-year school, not just a traditional CTE program. In Michigan, the CTE program traditionally is you go to your local high school and then in 11th grade, you spend half your day somewhere. In this case, it's, you know, it's Mason or the Hill Center. And you learn this skill, this craft, this career. And then you just go back to your local school, which is great, you know. Sexton's awesome. Everett, Eastern, terrific places. But what we're doing with the Lansing Tech idea is that you start in ninth grade at that school, learning one of the four departments, learning the four skills. So we're gonna have fire science and medical. We're gonna have computer science, culinary arts, and building trades. All four incredible career paths, not just jobs. But what's so powerful about the model that we have with Lansing Tech is that when you walk in in ninth grade, it's not just that you're gonna start, let's say, doing building trades, but your math class will incorporate what it means to build a house, let's say. So you imagine how much more engaging learning geometry will be rather than being like, "Oh, great, the hypotenuse, terrific." It's, "Oh, I gotta build this house. How long does the, you know, wood need to be? How high does the roof need to be?" And guess what you need to know for that? Geometry. And so the idea that we're gonna be doing not only a separate school where kids are gonna come and they're gonna feel like this is their own, but giving them an opportunity to learn math, learn English, learn science, learn history through the work that they're choosing to do, that's really powerful. And that's really great kind of differentiation, right? Giving kids different opportunities to learn great skills, right? We all eat. We all are at the table. But you know what? We don't necessarily have to have the same answer to this question. We all have our different narratives in our different places. So it's really, it's really powerful. Now, you know, one of our wonderful board members said, you know, "Are you proud? Are you whatever?" And I said, "Yeah, but we haven't started yet." So, you know, I do want to temper everybody's congratulations. I think it is wonderful. Nicole Millsap, who's the Director of CTE, Sergio Keck, who's the Deputy Superintendent in charge of that, have done extraordinarily amazing things to get this off the ground. I look really, really forward to, I mean, I doubt we're gonna have like a ribbon or anything. But, you know, we're gonna open the doors, you know, in September. And there'll be growing pains always, but it's gonna start with the ninth grade, the ninth to 10th, and then in the next four years, all the way to nine through 12. So again, you know, we'll, we'll take the wins when we get them. It was really powerful. I'm really happy. I'm really proud that we're doing this because it's the right differentiation for our children. Because again, this isn't just about a skill. It's about career, but it's also about academics. One of the sad truths about CTE historically has been that it has been used as a dumping ground, as a place to just throw kids because they don't want to be in the kind of quote-unquote "college track." But this is the exact opposite. This is saying to kids, "Your academics, your skill, your career are all gonna be tied together." And one of the wonderful things, as you know, I go on and on about graduation rates, is that historically though, the graduation rates for kids who are in true CTE programs tend to be higher. I think something to 8 to 10% higher. And so it makes sense because if you are engaged in the work, you're probably gonna continue to go to school. So with that, I really just want to thank everybody for their incredible support. I know we've been doing a lot of work lately, I mean, the last 21 months, of doing lots of new and innovative things. And your support as a board and really your support as a community allows us to continue to dream big. And, you know, we're dreaming and now we're, we're making things real. So with that, you're also, of course, in a treat. It feels sad to not have John McGraw at the table, but the, the great Jenna Urbly is here as, as running our communications department. And what do we have, of course, for you is a "Did You Know?" So I will turn it over to you to make that happen.
Thank you, Ben. We have a quick video tonight. We did our press conference yesterday for Lansing Tech, and we have a highlight reel for you.
Thank you all for being here. You know that this is such a wonderful thing for the school district because you see such incredible people behind us. We care so deeply about all of our children. And we know that having children learn academics is incredibly important. But we also know that so many kids want to have life skills. They want to have job opportunities. They want to be able to get their hands dirty, really dig into incredible learning opportunities. And we have been so lucky that the incredible people behind us have been so supportive of creating this idea of a career and technical education high school. We are going to be starting the CTE High School at Hill, and I'm proud to announce that it's gonna be called Lansing Tech.
We have this great resource here in Hill High School that hasn't really been utilized, and it's a large footprint. And I'm really happy that the district is in the position where we can reinvest in this resource that not only helps the community, but also helps our students have another path towards being successful once they leave our district. Yes, reading, writing, arithmetic, ELA, math scores, all of that's important. It is equally as important that we have career and technical-ready students.
I hadn't heard Lansing Tech until just now, so like you all, I'm excited. I love it. You know, you hear those schools all around the state and the nation, and now we've got one here in Lansing. So this is a tremendously creative way for us to help our students. And to see this school, which is, which is focused on, on the trades, to me, is tremendously exciting. The city of Lansing, you know, we need firefighters. This isn't a surprise to anybody. It's like every other community in the state and in the, in the nation. And so being able to generate firefighters and EMTs and EMS from our own students right here in Lansing, that's exciting.
I'd like to say thank you to the mayor. Thank you to the superintendent. Thank you to the school board and the executive team for supporting our efforts to expand college and career readiness and through CTE for our students. I'd like to tell you that during the month of March, my team and I went out and visited every eighth-grade classroom throughout the Lansing School District. And it was so exciting for us to be able to go in and speak with the eighth graders about what Career and Tech Ed is and what the opportunities are and what credentials are and skills and how that can turn into a lifelong career here in the Lansing and Greater Lansing community. The students were excited about the information that we were sharing with them. And many of the students would comment and say things like, "How come all schools aren't like this? How come school hasn't been like this up to this point? That sounds super cool. That sounds really fun. That sounds like a great opportunity to, you know, learn my math and my English and my science and get credits, but also prepare myself for a future career."
Parents, if you've got some kids out there, we're offering them careers, not jobs. Bring them out, get them signed up, and let's start making money.
Whether it's buying tools, because we literally want to provide tools for our kids. Imagine if we're literally providing tools for our kids. And so the promise is glad to be partnered with the folks on the ground already doing the work. Our young people are inherently worthy of this investment, of this work right here, of superintendent's vision, of the mayor's heart, of our council members and our unions, and everyone joining together. It's gonna take all of us. And the reality is this, our kids need to know they belong. And if kids want to work with their hands and really learn... And if kids wanna work with their hands and really learn, they belong here.
I am Daniel Chen and I am in graphic technology. And I've found my career. Ran into this just hoping I would find something to do with technology and I found so much more. I found clients, I found love for my work, I found actually wearing the first shirt I ever made in my first year, which was Chance. But I think it's just a nice symbol to realize how far I've come as not only a student, but as a illustrator and a technician.
I can't wait till the first graduating class, you know, in, I guess, four and a half years comes out and that they're going straight into that workforce and being able to see them and give back to this community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, I thought about this after the press conference that I was like, this is one of those times when the superintendent said, hear me out, I have a bananas out of the box idea. And it really turned into something great. So definitely looking forward to that. And, um, I'm actually excited that we're gonna have one more graduation to sit through because we'll have the Lansing Tech, uh, graduation. So thank you so much for, uh, sharing that with the board members and the community. Um, next we are onto our routine matters and I sincerely apologize to Ms. Moore for not, no, well, it, I do need to apologize because at first I was listed and I was like, no, it's not me, it's Missy. And then I'm sitting here, I'm like, no, it's Ms. Moore. So I'm actually gonna turn it over, uh, to Vice President Moore to give us our personnel report this evening.
That's fine. All right, Madam President. Um, included in your packet this evening is our personnel report for approval. I'd like to highlight, we have sixteen resignations, six, ten of those are non-teachers, six are teachers, and we have two retirements. We wanna celebrate a 29-year retirement and that in the person of Jody Albert, her last name, if you have any. Vickery, yes, congratulations on your, excuse me, those are 29 years. And then we have a 30-year retirement and that is Ying. Anybody wanna help me with the last name? Thank you so much. Thank you for your 30 years serving in the Lansing School District. We have, uh, 30 new hires, non-teachers, uh, new, um, we have seven new hired teachers and I'd like to celebrate one tenured, um, status and that is in the person of Catherine Schaefer. Congratulations. Uh, Madam President, that concludes my personnel report for this evening.
Thank you so much. Any questions from board members? All right. Thank you. Uh, moving on, that brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Our consent agenda includes the approval of the March 9th regular meeting minutes and the March 16th information study session minutes. And it also includes the, um, receipt and approval of the treasurer's report that was presented today. Um, oh no, I'm sorry, of the March treasurer's report. May I have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Madam President, I move, I, I move, I make a motion to move that we approve the consent agenda, including the following. I don't have my agenda in front of me. Thank you. Approval of the regular minutes for March 9th and the information study session minutes for March 16th and receive an approval of the personnel report for March 2023.
Okay, it's moved by Ms. Moore, supported by Ms. Williams. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Great, motion passes 7-0. We have no actions or new business before the board this evening, so that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. We do have one registered, uh, speaker this evening and that is Janice Owens. Um, Ms. Owens, I would invite you to our podium here. You have three minutes to address the board. Yes, please. Um, and the board does not typically respond to public comment. Thank you.
Um, I'm coming to you because you oversee the operations of the school district because my son was held at school without my prior knowledge and I became aware of how he has been mishandled for the entire school year. I suffered from the effects of the school not having a building administrator and other employees feeling empowered to make autonomous decisions. Until a light was shined on the situation, I had no idea how, uh, bad things were. I had no idea of what was going on. I'm sure you guys had no idea. I think you should demand accountability from the administration that leaves a school without leadership for months. I think you should demand accountability for a special education department that drops the ball to provide no services for my neurodivergent son. When the top administrators in this district have no idea of what's going on in the schools, I think you guys have work to do. I'm a single mother of three children under the age of 11. My family and I have suffered because of the neglect and mismanagement of the Lansing School District. I lost a good job at Blue Cross Blue Shield because I had to leave work too many times to come to school and deal with issues with my son. Issues that wouldn't have gotten that bad or out of hand if the protocols of his 504 had been followed. Without the proper behavioral treatment, the teachers basically antagonized him instead of helping him. I then got a job that I could work from home with Apple. Again, complications from trying to get doctor verifications that the school already had, uh, and they have already been done and dealing with the school calling me about my son's behavior caused me to lose that job. Without a steady income, I lost my apartment, had a very hard time finding another one. Homelessness and being transit didn't help my son's situation, it made it worse. This is just one account of what is happening in this district. If this is happening to my family, I wonder how many other families it's happening to. I wanna be, I wanna be made whole for what my family has suffered through, but I really wanna make sure this doesn't happen to anybody else's family or child. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is our report from secretary and announcements. And I did, um, want to say that Dr. Rodriguez asked if I could cover for him this evening and while I do that, he also asked me to say something else. I'm gonna find the email while I also read the, um, announcements. So our announcements this evening include that the nurturing, um, parenting program will be held on April 10th and April 24th via Zoom through the Community Learning Center. The district calendar has more information regarding registration. So again, I will repeat that, the nurturing parenting program via Zoom through the Community Learning Center will be held on April 10th and April 24th. We also have some modifications to our school calendar on April 12th and April 13th. So make sure you are, um, parents, you are looking at your students' calendars for those two days. It looks like on those two days, we have full day for elementary and all high schools have juniors only in the morning. That's confusing even for me. So we're gonna say, make sure that you check your, your, uh, students' calendars for any changes for March, or sorry, for April 12th and 13th. Next board meeting will be held on April 13th, uh, 6:00 PM and this, this, uh, meeting, we will be at Gardner. So board members, don't forget, our ISS will be at Gardner on April 13th. And then we will return back to the boardroom for our regular meeting on April 20th at 6:00 PM. And Dr. Rodriguez wanted me to remind and to communicate with, um, his board colleagues that the policy committee will be meeting on April 20th at noon and they have a few policies that they are going to, um, have for us to review at a future meeting. So that concludes the secretary report and announcements. Are there any questions? All right, Niall, I am going to open the floor to board comments. Any comments from the colleagues this evening? Sure, Dr., Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. And I wanna thank the board for, uh, support of, um, me having attended the NSBA, National Sports Association Conference, uh, this year. I'm just gonna give you the, the highlights or the names of the, the workshops that I attended. But the first one that I was able to make was the Power of Student Voice, Welcoming Students to the Dais. And I know that we're in that conversation. This was a presentation from school board members, student school board members from, um, uh, Maryland. And the interesting thing about that is that Maryland passed legislation to allow students to serve on the Board of Education. They are not elected by the community, they're elected by their own community, which is the students, uh, in secondary and high schools. So they, they mount a campaign in the schools and they get elected to be on the board. Uh, there's much more to that, but I just wanted to give you that. And not, I plan on getting the, the information packets for each of the presentations, but I just wanna give you the, the highlight that was very interesting. Super, super, um, well-prepared students. And there was another, there's two, um, school districts in, in Maryland that, that have, uh, at least that made that presentation. There was another group that the school board, uh, that represented on the school board was a middle school student. And I have to find out more about that, but, uh, as, as we talk about, you know, um, different ways that different districts or states do this, you know, it's, it's important to see what others have done and are doing so we don't have to duplicate stuff and, and learn from, from whatever their mistakes were or, or, and what they're doing now. So I'll do that. I, um, I had meant to bring you a, um, a poster that our Speaker for the National Hispanic Council breakfast, the presenter on, um, Consuelo Castillo Kick Push, Army Veteran, author, motivational speaker and educator. So she, she spoke about, um, not only the students, but really gave some, um, pointers to, to board members and staff, how we need to, uh, become a team in order to, uh, help students as a whole. I'll bring that as well. Heard from Jenna Hager, co-host of NBC's Today and she's a bestselling author. Um, it was interesting. There was really a conversation between she and the president of NSBA. She's very supportive of public education. She was a teacher. So, um, she had some insights on that. So it was, uh, I guess her whole theme was in support of public education and, and how, um, she dealt with, with her stint as the, uh, as a teacher as well. I, I went to a session called School Boards and Superintendent Relationships for Student Success, Tools You Can Use to Increase Functionality. I think if I compare what they were talking about, the board, what it should be, uh, and looking at our board, our new instituted board, because we've, we've got two new members that, that really, uh, changes things in, in different ways and, um, different voices. But the bottom line is that two things, the board only has one, one employee. Okay? That was emphasized many times. So, um, stay away from meddling in, in, in day-to-day operations. They didn't say it that way, but I guess I'm, I choose to say that. And the other one, they had a list of, of things. Is this board or, or superintendent, you know? So that, so that the board members could, um, think of things that, that they, that it was, you know, it was important for them to have a voice in there or it was something that was day-to-day operation and superintendent would, would, uh, take care of it. I will also try to get the rest of the story on that, but it was interesting. I think, I think we stuck up pretty well in that sense, unless the superintendent tells me different. But I think, you know, um, and, and actually, you know, the, let me digress a little bit because it also involves the, our board and the students. One of the, um, one of the, um, benefits having student voice on, on the, uh, dais was that there's no larger community in the school district than the students in terms of that they're here. And, and, and they were, um, very, um, that they were encouraged to, to, not only to bring the voice of the students, but also to ask questions. And, and how to ask questions? Because, um, depends how you say or how you answer or how you ask, you know, you may have a different response. I think that's the same thing for the board in general, superintendent board relationships. So that was interesting for both. And the last workshop that I went to was Disability Justice. They're really talking, it's, it's really interesting, um, the new definitions coming out in the disability, um, uh, world, I, I'll say that. But, uh, a leap forward for disability rights and, and how to treat some of those, uh, how to do the best we can to, to, um, help our students with, uh, um, different learning situations. And, and the other one that I wanna talk about right now is, is just simply to say that Adam Shire, founder of Siri, engineer and entrepreneur, gave a speech on AI, artificial intelligence. And, um, I know that's coming into our conversation on and off. And the bottom line for him, and, and it was a, a really nice presentation, but the fact of the matter is, it's here to stay. It's not gonna go anywhere. So either the, the school boards, um, uh, he emphasized school boards that needed to develop some policies on AI and how it's used and, um, uh, and how teachers can use it as a, as a tool for teaching. But there must be policies because, you know, there's so much in there that, uh, there may be some technologies that, that we may not want our students or staff to use, but we have to, I guess the big, big thing is to, we have to develop policies on the use of AI, um, especially in learning and how a student can use AI support to complete their assignments, you know? And so I, I just wanna, I just wanted to give you a little overview of things that that happened and that I was able to go. If it was more than me, we could have had 10 sessions, you know, covered, but, uh, it was, it was good. And, and like I said, I'll, I'll look for the background information and give you a packet to every one of, of, uh, the background. That's all I'd say, madam.
Thank you. When they changed the keynote speaker away from Cheryl Lee Ralph, I just didn't know if I could make the trip to Florida. Although they did have another Abbott Elementary School actress there, just as Cheryl Lee Ralph.
I, I missed that one because I couldn't get there.
Yeah. That's okay. Thank you and thank you for covering and providing that feedback and information to the board. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The move by Mr. Lopez, supported by Ms. Lilgie. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Wonderful. Motion passes 7-0 and at 6:47, we are adjourned.